All right, good evening, everybody. I am Mayor Mark Lamont, and I'd like to welcome all of you, both physically present here, as well as everybody online, as we called to order this joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the Successory Agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, February 13th, 2018. And I'd like to begin by introducing the council and our city staff. To my left, I have Vice Mayor John Delloso, Councilmember Susan Harvey. Over here, we have Councilmember Wendy Skilman, and Councilmember John Moore. Right over to my right again, we have City Manager Damian O'Bid, as well as City Attorney Robin Dodia. Right behind them, we have Police Chief Michael Parrish. And in the audience, we have our Administrative Services Director Narum Velosa, our Community Development Director Vicki Parker. We have, let's see, our City Engineer, Director of Public Works Craig Scott, and last but not least, our Deputy City Clerk Lauren Burgess, right over here. So with that, I'm going to ask the Deputy City Clerk to take us through a roll call, please.
Councilmember Skilman?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Mayor Lamont?
Here.
Vice Mayor Delloso?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Thank you. And with that, I'm going to ask everyone to please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And that brings us to item number four, which is approval of the minutes and a notice of waiving of reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and/or adopted under this agenda. And this is an action item. Do I have a move for approval here?
So moved.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion, Councilmember Harvey, second, Councilmember Moore. Anybody want to speak in the minutes? Nope, thank you. With that, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And seeing none, that carries, five zero. And we are to announcements. So I'd like to begin with our meeting orientation for new attendees or new viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted City Council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the City Council will consider the item, and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The City Council may, or may not, choose to respond to comments as government code allows. However, if the City Council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the City Council or its members might believe to be incorrect, misinformed, or purposely biased. Next, the City of Kattati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. by appointment in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of its Kattati Open for Business program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Kattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business here in the city. The Roanoke Park Kattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, please call the library at (584) 9121, or simply visit www.sonoma The Kattati Historical Society Museum is open regularly, the second Tuesday of each month from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., and of course, by appointment. For more information, contact them at (707) 794-794-0305. Citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati community alerts, providing text or email, are encouraged to sign up at nixle.com. That is N-I-X-L-E dot com. And we have a new class. Beginning February 15th, the City of Kattati is offering a new comic drawing for beginners class. You can come learn how to create your own comic characters and bring your imagination to life. Registration is now open. For more information, you can contact the Recreation Coordinator Ashley Wilson at (665) 4222, or simply by email at awilson@kattatacity.org. And lastly, along those lines, the city does offer a variety of recreation programs for all ages. We have full details on the web at kattatacity.org, so please come take a look. And that brings us to approval of the final agenda. I'll look to City Manager O'Bid and see if we have any changes to the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor, no changes.
No, very good. So with that, that brings us to Agenda Item 7, and this is citizen's business, as well as public comment for consent calendar items. So before we open it up, I have something I need to read first. "Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar, or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2017-02, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where a disability accommodation has been requested." So I'm going to begin. I have one speaker card from Peter Stone from Kattati. Welcome.
Good evening. Peter Stone, 103 Kingston Way, here in Kattati. Once a week, I will look at the Community Voice newspaper, take a look at the police logs. Last week, I saw a notice stating that information will not be furnished until further notice. I'd like to know why or where else I can obtain this information. I'd like to be able to keep track of what's going on in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Stone. All right, that is the only card I have. Do I have anybody else who'd like to speak on their citizen's business? Mr. Parrish?
Council, Mr. Lamont, also, I wanted to bring your attention that a couple of years back, you promised that you would refer to me as Councilman Parrish, or Councilman George Parrish, when this issue came up, that that's my official title. You're welcome to call me former Councilman Parrish, or as you suggested, the recalled Councilman Parrish. But you failed to ever make good on your promise, and I think it's high time maybe we look at that. You introduce City Council, you introduce city staff, but you don't recognize any of the hardworking and distinguished members, former members of the City Council in the audience. And I think it's probably well, would well serve you if you would do that. Also, on this reading of the citizen's business, you don't have to read that. I don't know where that came from. The fact that the City Council now allows for a minimum or a maximum of three minutes for public to speak was not always the case here in Kattati. For many years, the maximum time to allow for public comment was five minutes. The three-minute rule is probably the state minimum before anybody gets charged with a crime on this council. So that should be made clear. Also, under announcements, under number A, I was talking to Lori Alderman about this on A. I don't know where you people are making all this up, but this reminds me of the days when you had housekeeping rules being read to the audience every council meeting that were being changed every other council meeting and updated without a vote, without public input, apparently being all done behind the scenes. I'd like to know where this A came from, whose idea it was, whether somebody is taking it upon themselves to insist that the mayor read this, or whether this is the mayor's verbiage. I don't, I don't understand. It's not very transparent. Now, Mrs. Harvey, at the last city council meeting, you said that indeed you did ask city staff some of your questions in the week prior in preparation for the last council meeting. And I would ask, you know, the question came to my mind, if that is the case, then why in the world would you be repeating all your questions to the staff during the city council meeting if you asked them during the week? It didn't make much sense to me. I still suggest if you have questions for city staff, as your city council handbook recommends, that you do that during the week, and then the city staff can refer to each one of you, give you credit for your, for your questions actually, and say, you know, Mrs. Harvey had brought up a point about this, and then explain, have the staff explain, give you an answer to your questions. So I think we need to make up our minds. We're either going to ask those questions during the week and save, save the time here at the council meeting, or we're not.
Mr. Parrish, I'm going to ask you to wrap up your over.
Okay, that's it, Mayor, thank you.
By the way, for your walkaway, did you want to speak on consent today, Mr. Parrish?
Yeah, on consent item A, I don't understand why this is on the consent calendar after the last city council meeting. City Council asks city attorney to come back with a staff report on the prohibition of firearms at the local marijuana dispensary, Mercy Wellness. And I don't know when that report is going to come tonight, because if you vote on this consent item, we're not going to hear that report. I think you need to hear that report, and I would also like to state that just because the city attorney gives her legal opinion does not make her opinion the law. What the city attorney is paid to do is represent you and to, to protect you, protect your interests, and never has there been a law school that has made it a requirement of any law student upon graduation to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Oftentimes, they're not supposed to tell the truth. They're supposed to make sure that they can represent you and try to fool the other side into making mistakes or not doing their homework. That's part of the legal profession. So having said that, I still object to the fact that you are banning Mercy Wellness from, from having firearms on-site. That's a, that's a restriction or prohibition that you do not require on my home-based business. You don't require that of any other businesses in town, yet you require this of this one business for no apparent reason. You haven't given any justification for that whatsoever. You extort $30,000 out of this dispensary every year for no good reason. You don't ask me for $30,000 a year to operate a business in Kattati, but you ask Mercy Wellness to. I've always objected to this. I've never got a logical answer why you are extorting this, this, this money, that you're shaking down this business so unfairly. There's no justification whatsoever. I'd like some answers to these questions.
And thank you, Mr. Parrish. Do I have anybody else? Would you like to speak in citizen's business? Please approach.
First, on the announcements, you don't mention in the, in the announcement about the consent calendar, that we also have three minutes for the consent calendar, so it's not really, and you make a big emphasis on your rights to speak, not what the, the, and this was put in with no, who asked for it? Nobody asked for it. You can put something on the back of the, the table, or put something on the website. It's not something that needs to be read every time. Let's see. Back to regular citizen's business, the hotel, it's just, why is, you guys have so much invested in public works, public, there was a deal three and a half years ago, it's on paper, I got, and why are you spending money on that, that before it's built? The downtown specific plan, everything is right there for the hotel. There's, our west side streets are crumbling. We had, you spent almost $4 million on, or $3 million, I forget, anyways, on downtown. We got $40,000 out of a, eighty, the ADA grant on the west side. If you haven't seen West School Hill, it's falling apart, and that's our main thoroughway. You need to start putting things on the west side. And I'm also concerned, the, all the trucks from the cleanup are coming, and they're going down west Kattati, through west Kattati, and it's, who knows how much that extra weight is damaging the roads? I mean, they're going through the, through it, through Grammstein, taking a left, and it'll back up to west Kattati or further every day now. And I've also discovered they all stop on the right-hand side by the Chinese, and they jump over and get lunch at McDonald's, I mean, at Subway Burger King. I couldn't figure out that till the other day. But we really need emphasis on the west side, and we need, and we're not seeing it at all. And I'm worried about, you know, the future of the roads and everything. And I guess that's it as far as citizen business. I wanted to go on the consent calendar.
Please.
Okay.
Give us just a second, let us reset that timer for you, so we don't lose any of your time. There you go.
Yep, okay. Again, I brought up with the, we, we were expecting a staff report, I don't know why this was put on the consent calendar for the gun issue, when it shouldn't just be automatically passed, we should be able to hear a report on it. The other one was, a couple of things. There's still more money going out to the downtown improvement plan, there's like $30,000 more. How much money are we going to keep spending on the bottomless pit of downtown and at the sacrifice of this, of the west side? The other one was the F, the serviced agreement for the bicycle and pedestrian wayfindings. There, it's a $90,000 grant, $90,000 grant, and you're spending $60,000 on the, on the contractor for the study. That makes no sense, and especially since the wayfinding program, you stopped it over at the tunnel, but under 101, there's not anything on the west side. Why can't you spend less on, I mean, in-house, a person with a design program can do, can do signage, you know? There's a lot of things, and why can't you spend the money more wisely and include the west side? We have a whole pedestrian way down to, and dog walking at Mark Goes Miami House, all the way down to, it would be nice to have some signs over there to direct. So, yeah, so that's about it. I've got my, every three weeks, you know, speak, public speaking, thank you.
Thank you, very good. If I close, I have one more public comment, please approach. Mr. Williams.
Good to see you. I'm Dave Williams. I live in Kattati now. I just moved over to the west Kattati, and well, I have a couple of things I want to say. I want to piggyback on what Lori said. It's, you know, in west Kattati, it's very dark at certain times, certain parts of the street, and there could be, there should be lights there. Because I do a lot of biking, and I do a lot of walking, and sometimes, you know, with the, when I get off work, I, you know, I just go through the tunnel and go that way, and there are times that I just can't see anything, it is pitch black. And it's, I think that's a pretty dangerous road, especially with someone walking, even if you have a flashlight. My, and also, there, there's a handicap curb, I forgot the name of the street, but there's a handicap curb there that just leads right into gravel, and I don't know if that's like a, I don't know if you're going to leave it there, but that, it's a bad look, because I mean, who's going to get on their wheelchair and go, you know, just, who wants to go right into gravel off of, off of the paved road? And my second thing is, in other parts of the city, the trees hang, the branches hang very, very low, like especially around the Animal Defense Legal Fund. I mean, if you're four foot five, you can walk, you can walk through without, you know, without any problem, but at, at night, you know, some, like people my size, yeah, I mean, there's a risk, you have to either like lift up the branches and walk under and keep doing that, or you have to walk into the street. And, I mean, the bike lane is a bike lane, the sidewalk should be the sidewalk, and those limbs should be cut down. That's it, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may ask Mr. Williams a clarifying question on that?
If you'd like to, please.
Mr. Williams, is that the Animal Legal Defense Fund at 150 or 160 East Kattati, or further down across from?
No, the one on East Kattati, like if you.
There's two, there's the original one, and then they moved to the other building? So it's the one more toward downtown?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the original.
I am not very tall.
Okay, so, so we know what, which one it is.
Yeah, I mean, because I mean, it's, you know, like, some people may not be able to bend, they may not be able to bend over, bend down comfortably and walk under, so it just needs to be.
Thank you.
Be trimmed, thank you.
All right, and do we have anyone else who'd like to speak in citizen's business or consent calendar? Seeing none, I'm going to close that. Did we, ah, that's okay, I should have been looking a little more, please approach.
Good evening, Mayor, and councilmembers. I just want to thank you guys for making the process easy and putting the cannabis item on the consent calendar. It's been quite a learning experience for us as we've gone from 2010 till now, and just want to say thank you for making it easy and having it work with us. Thank you.
Very good. And see, this is what happens when you hit the gavel, then all of a sudden, everybody's got ideas. Welcome, Mr. Litwin.
Pardon me, Mr. Mayor. Craig Litwin wanted to also thank you and staff for your hard work on the cannabis ordinance. It means a lot to the industry that you took such a, a deep breath and developed a comprehensive ordinance, so thank you again.
All right, and this time, I'm going to look really carefully, maybe even a second time, make it behind my back, just to be sure, and seeing none, this time, we will close public comment and bring it back. So we have a few questions here. First of all, I believe we had a question, and I'm embarrassed to say, Mr. Stone, I didn't notice this in the paper, the cessation of the police logs. I wonder if we could have some information on why that might have occurred, and if that's not going to reoccur, where you could find information like that?
So the county police record system is the source of that information, and sometimes there's a little computer glitch or something, and it doesn't produce on the deadline that the paper needs it. So I assume that's what happened, but the chief's going to look into it.
Very good. So, so it's likely we'll see that coming back, this was hopefully not an ongoing occurrence?
Yeah, there was no, there was no intention to not include it.
Good, good, okay. So see, we get to blame the county, and I'll only say it'll be back, so that's good news. I'm glad you asked.
Could we ask staff to get back to Mr. Stone when they get an answer?
I think that would be a very good idea, actually. If you could leave your contact information with the clerk before you leave, we'll give you a call with whatever we hear back from the county, if, if you desire that. Very good. Let's see, we had a question about west Kattati being dark. I can tell historically that for that part of the neighborhood, for at least the last 30 years, a lot of the neighborhood actually preferred not to have a lot of streetlights in a lot of areas. But I do know also that we're in the process of lighting up some areas that are incredibly dark, especially that tunnel you've been talking about, and I'll let staff speak to that, but I believe relighting that tunnel and making it a little less scary, especially at night, is part of the upcoming lighting project for this year?
It's, it's included in the scope of work around the tunnel and the entrances to the tunnel, yeah.
Good, good, I think that'd be very helpful. And one more question for staff. Trees, for example, the, the tree that we finally nailed down in front of the Animal Defense League, who's responsible for those? I mean, obviously, if it's a public hazard, this is something we can go out and take a look at, and I wonder if staff could look at this one particular one, since it seems to be getting everybody. But is that something that Public Works usually deals with? I have the sense this is more a local responsibility for whoever? Because I've, I don't think I've seen us out working on limbing trees up in areas like that.
We'll take a look at it. I mean, you know, over roadways, over the roadways themselves, Public Works will typically limit up high enough, so.
Yeah, I've seen it in some of the residential neighborhoods, and it just happens, but in a place like that, it might be a good place, if we can just limit up to make sure that somebody walking, looking on their phone, doesn't hurt themselves, that might be a good idea. All right, did we have, let's see.
You know it's low when I hit my head on it.
Thank you. You and me both. All right, do we have anything, any else from staff, or anything else we need to cover? I will be pulling the cannabis item from consent, simply because we do, I understand, have a report from our attorney, so I heard that a couple of times, and yes, we're going to ask for that report, so, and that's my only reason for pulling it, so. And that might be a perfect segue, actually, to go over to the consent calendar. So I will be pulling item A. I'm going to ask if we have a motion for B through F, or if anybody wants to see anything else pulled and discussed tonight.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item E.
Item E? All right. So we're going to, then I'm going to be looking for motions for all items, save A and E.
With that, sounds like items B, C, D, and F. I make a motion to approve on the consent calendar.
At second?
So we have a motion and second, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Very good, that motion carries unanimously. So now for this, we do have a report out from our city attorney, I just want to check, I'm looking for a head nod from the council, if we want to hear this report out from the attorney, that we did ask her to take a look on, and we issue a First Amendment concerns potentially regarding this particular ordinance. And I'm seeing head nods? Good? All right, very good.
Thank you. Yes, our office does have a cannabis law practice group that formed about a year and a half ago, and I took advantage of some of the expertise of my colleagues in that group to take a look at the line of Second Amendment cases that deals with gun regulation and gun prohibition. And we have done that, and I have concluded that on the basis of U.S. Supreme Court and Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals cases, that the provision in the proposed city ordinance would pass constitutional muster. The Supreme Court and the Ninth Circuit have said in a number of cases that the right to bear arms is not absolute, and they have found constitutional, a number of different kinds of regulations and prohibitions on a person's right to bear, carry, and use firearms. Generally, the courts follow a two-pronged test when they're analyzing firearms regulations. The first prong is, is the conduct that we're looking at, something that was historically deemed a part of the Second Amendment right. And here, we feel rather confident that the courts would not find that to be the case here with this prohibition. Clearly, there were no cannabis businesses operating in the early days. Indeed, there were not a lot of commercial businesses of any kind operating when the Constitution was drafted, and based on the way that the courts analyzed that historical view, we feel that probably the courts would not even get to the second prong of the test. But we did look at that second prong, and that basically says that depending on how severe the burden is to a person's right to carry arms, and how all-encompassing, I should say, that it is, that determines the level of scrutiny that a court will give. Here, there is no outright ban on a person's right to carry arms. There is indeed a requirement that if you are applying for a commercial cannabis permit, you may not have firearms there. And that is the type of regulation, factually different, of course, but the type of regulation that has been found to be deserving only of what is called intermediate scrutiny, as opposed to strict scrutiny. Under intermediate scrutiny, various kinds of justification have been deemed to authorize this kind of regulation. And here, of course, cannabis remains, under federal law, a Class I Schedule narcotic. And there's certainly case law that has relied on surveys and other information showing a link between drug use and drug businesses and gun violence. So given that, and given other justifications, we feel that even if a court were to look at both prongs of the analysis, there is, we believe, an excellent chance that this provision would be sustained. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'm going to look to the council, see if we have any questions for our city attorney. I'm gonna look to the council, see if we have any questions for our city attorney? Yes. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Um, I had a question in reference to if the applicant had no objection to the restriction of firearms on their business, and then the other two parties that brought up the Second Amendments, they don't really even have a standing in this particular case, do they?
That's correct. We, we did take a look at standing, and the, uh, the plaintiffs here would be, uh, someone who's seeking the commercial cannabis permit.
Much more of a red herring, I would think.
Well, thank you.
Any other questions? No, so with that, we're also going to be pulling item E, which is acceptance of a downtown... No, we've already commented on consent.
No, 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 since your reports, sir, we didn't know if we were gonna pull the item or not.
Actually, come to think of it, I...
Yeah, I opened up the public comment now.
You know what, we just spoke in consent, but she did give her report, you didn't get to hear that, so I'd be delighted to hear three minutes from you.
Thank you, sir, I'll, I'll be short. First of all, regarding standing, none of the employees, uh, future employees of Mercy Wellness are here tonight to protect their, their Second Amendment rights. Uh, that's one thing. Also, you need to understand that it was Ms. Donahue's law firm who was held against in federal court regarding my civil rights. So I would ask you to be very, very careful in trusting the legal opinion of a law firm who you spent over a hundred thousand dollars with, put together an argument that you felt was sound, and they lost soundly before a federal, a federal court in San Francisco. Mrs. Don, Mrs. Donahue is not the last word in the law. Also, it is just astonishing to think that, that of the two-pronged, prong test, that the city of Cattati is now concerned with protecting citizens, um, from their, uh, from possibly violating federal law. That that concern for the city to protect citizens from federal law by not being able to use, own, or possess a firearm at a marijuana dispensary is ludicrous. That's not the state's concern, to protect us from federal regulations. It's a constitutional issue, and the constitutional issue, I think, is clear. I don't think that the city would meet that test. And I think that I wanna formally object on the record to preserve every citizen's rights in town, especially business owners, from, from government overreach of the city of, of Cattati banning the use or possession of firearms at a place of business. It's absurd, and I object.
Very good, thank you. And I'm gonna look and see, since we've opened this up, Ms. Alderman, would you like to speak? Please approach.
Um, I found, um, Ms. Donahue's, um, very much on the federal side, but if you know the jurisdiction, we're also members of the state of California, and so we're under state, there's gonna be a federal and a state mismatch of laws anyways. And so, yes, if we take it to federal court, it might, um, it'd probably be struck down, but if you take it to state court, which has civil rights and constitutions, it might do it. So it's, uh, it's a balancing act because marijuana is an illegal drug. Um, so I just wanted to point that out, that this is a state versus federal issue. Um, the other thing is Mr. Moore's comment about the, the, um, yes, it, it go, it, if the business, sorry, I'm having trouble talking today. Um, business owner doesn't object, that's fine, but, and his employees don't, yeah, but what about the people that are coming in? What are their constitutional rights to, if they are in the state, allowed to have, um, that? It's not, it, yeah, they, they're fine with it, but maybe it's, a customer may not be, is all of what I'm saying. Anyway, thanks.
And thank you. And I'm gonna look around and see if anybody else wants to speak, and if not, we're gonna close this, and then we will get to item E, which is acceptance of a downtown specific plan.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, please.
I apologize.
You're gonna have to yell loudly, 'cause I clearly have bad attention span tonight.
Vicki, could you wait one second? I'm sorry. Um, I, thank you for indulging me for a moment. I'm not going to try to refute what was said, although I could, but I would like to correct one thing on the record, because it's come up before. Uh, my office did not represent the city in the case to which Mr. Berish referred, so I didn't want to take that hit unduly. Thank you.
Some of us might wish you did, but that's another matter completely. And I believe there's one other piece that we wanna cover on this before we move to the next thing. Uh, Ms. Parker?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I apologize for this. We did have one, um, change to make to the ordinance, which I'll characterize as a typo that Councilmember Harvey called to my attention. Um, if you go quickly to packet page sixty-two, um, item 5J, um, staff would propose that we strike the last two sentences of that paragraph. It, um, can be confusing, I think, in the future for folks. It was, um, written at the time we were contemplating possible limited outdoor cultivation, and so, um, I think if we strike those sentences, it would be clear for folks trying to understand the regulation.
Very good, that's, that's, that's logical, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and so now, this time, with some, some degree of hope, I'm thinking we are actually going to move to item E, which is acceptance of a downtown specific plan revitalization project improvements, and request for additional appropriation from project closeout. Mr. O'Bid, will you be handling that, or Mr. Scott?
Um, well, so before we, before we move to E, did, um, just in terms of process, do you guys wanna vote on A, and then we'll close that one out and move on to E?
I would make, I would make a motion that we, uh, accept item A as a consent calendar, approve item A as a consent count A.
With the, uh, with the, with the correction?
With the amendment to the... I'll second that.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second for passing this with, with corrections. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? No, very good.
And, um, since we have not discussed it, and if we, uh, haven't gotten into it yet, can I withdraw my motion to pull that item?
Yeah, I think so, yeah. Yeah, you just vote on it.
So I will withdraw that motion to, um...
So that looks like I never get to get to E, ever. So this is a first, this is pretty exciting, I thank you for that. You never knew when something new was gonna happen. So with that, I'm looking to staff, I'm not seeing anything else coming up.
Do we need to, do we need to move on?
E.
I'd make a motion to, um, include a passage on, uh, item E on the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion to include one more consent calendar item, which is E, uh, on the consent calendar. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, that passes it well. So this takes us to direction and future agenda items. Do we have any direction for future agenda items for tonight from the council? Seeing none, very good, we'll move on to public hearings, and the first one is the introduction of an ordinance to repeal of cannabis urgency ordinance, and this is item ten on the agenda.
Thank you, uh, Mayor, members of the council. So I'll, I'll keep it brief, 'cause we've been over this numerous times already, but these are the interim urgency ordinances. Um, there was, there was one on prohibiting outdoor growing in, of, uh, non-medical cannabis in residential areas. One that was, um, uh, regulated indoor growing of cannabis, and then the third one that was recently, um, adopted at the end of last year, which, um, prohibited commercial activities of canna-, new commercial activities related to cannabis, to freeze things in place while we did what we just did a moment ago, which is pass the permanent ordinance. So, um, that's what this is all about, is just repealing all of those, just to clean up the administrative record, and just so you know, although it's, it is in the staff report, but so you know. In terms of, um, precedence, even though this, um, because the permanent ordinance was adopted tonight, it'll go into effect thirty days from now, this is introduced tonight, you'll see it again at the next, presuming the council, um, introduces it, you'll see it again at the next council meeting, and then it goes into effect thirty days after that, so it does extend a little bit beyond the effective date of the permanent ordinance, but it doesn't, legally, it, it shouldn't matter, because the permanent ordinance would take precedence in that short period of time when they're overlapping.
Interesting. All right, do we have any clarifying questions for staff on that particular item? Looking to both sides, seeing none, I'm gonna open that to public comment. Anybody from the public wishes to comment? Seeing none, I'm gonna bring it back. Any discussion from the council? If I'm not seeing that, then I'm gonna be looking for a motion for...
I'll move to introduce an ordinance repealing the interim urgency ordinances on indoor and outdoor cannabis cultivation and commercial cannabis operations.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion from Vice Mayor Delosso, and a second from Councilmember Miller. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, that carries unanimously. Thank you very much. So this takes us to our regular agenda, eleven A. Let's see, which is the approval of twenty eighteen Deer, Deer Sonoma North Bay Fire Relief fundraiser in La Plaza Park for April twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen. And this is written by Ashley Wilson, who will be presenting this tonight.
I'll be in Ashley's place tonight for this. So, um, this is a new event, and, um, as you, as you have read in the staff report, it is a fundraiser for fire relief, and it's being, um, conducted by, there's a, um, a teacher and some, some of their students that are, um, that are trying to raise money for fire relief, and, um, it's, it's just use of the park, not any street closure, so it's pretty straightforward, fairly simple. Although they're asking for exclusive use of the park, they're not, it's not a fenced, you know, ticketed event, it's open to the public. And they are asking for a waiver of the park fee, which, um, is a hundred and fifty dollars, um, which would, which would conform to our, um, park rental policy for not-for-profits in the first year of an event. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff on this particular item? Seeing none, I'm gonna close, open it to public comment. See if anybody who wants to comment or question on this? Mr. Berish, please.
Thank you. It's Councilman Berish. I didn't read the staff report, but I'd have a couple of questions. First one being, is this a, a nonprofit organization? Because I had the honor of sitting in this chamber during previous council meetings over the years regarding city fees and, uh, and taxes and so forth, and the city council went through a long report on the need to, um, bring in revenue to the city and increase fees to reflect the costs on, on the city for the services that are being rendered to groups using public facilities. It was unanimous by Bob Coleman and John Gardino, myself, Pat Chilardi, and Janet Orchard, that it was high time that the city stopped giving waivers to all these different groups who were crying for free services from the city. And the arguments went like this, nothing's free, everything costs money. Uh, yet, we seen the city council over and over again give exception to exception, to exception. And what I fear is gonna happen is we're gonna be facing another budget crisis in the future, and everyone's gonna start pointing fingers of what in heck were we doing all these year waiving fees? It, it's almost like it comes around, like, in a circle, the arguments. Then the city wants to get tough on fees. We need money. Everything costs money, and we need to pass that on to the users. Uh, I think you need to look at this. Um, I rented the park in the past for charitable event. I was not given a free ride, I didn't ask for a free ride, because I understood the financial condition that the city was in. And I think you need to be fair about this. Uh, you need to start, uh, charging your fees and stop waiving the fees every time something sounds, makes you feel all warm and fuzzy inside. We're running a business here, the city is a business, okay? And, um, we should, we'll be thinking twice before we give exceptions.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak on this particular item? Mr. Hancock, welcome.
Yes, good evening, council, thank you. Yes, I support the motion here. I mean, it's a terrible event that's happened, and I think whatever we can do to really bring some healing in the community and, um, help people come together would be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, if anybody else'd like to speak, and we have one more person, welcome. If you would be willing, do you identify yourself with a city clerk?
Hi, I'm Malia Pavloff. Um, I'm a colleague of Emily Cedar, the teacher who submitted the motion. She's had a death in the family, so I'm here representing her, but, um, it, it is a, um, it's a group of students and teachers who are in the process of establishing themselves as a nonprofit. Um, it's meant to be a healing event for the community, um, as well as a, a way for the students to come together and, um, sort of establish themselves and their voices and, and the events that happen in October, so it really should just be a benefit to the community. But it is something that everyone is donating their time and, and resources to, and that's why we feel that the, um, the fee waivers should be granted. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, would anybody else likes to speak on this? Seeing none, I'm gonna close public comment and bring it back. Well, I'm not sure what we did in the years past, uh, ten, over a decade ago, but I know for most of the recent years, we've had a policy that basically, any new events, we try to give a helping hand to, and I think that's beneficial. We wanna help certainly valuable events like this, and we also wanna help new events that might be permanent, for example, get a foothold and see if they can become financially viable, at which point, then I'm sure the council is more than willing to charge them the going rate. And yes, you know, times do change, but certainly, I think, for a hundred and fifty dollars, that's a chance we can take to help to the community. I will point out, too, that I understand that the proceeds from this are all going to the Redwood Credit Union's, uh, North Bay Fire Relief Fund, which I think for most of us who've been reading the papers, recognize they're just doing really an excellent job in raising money, uh, throughout this event, so I think that's quite remarkable. So I'm gonna bring it back and see if the council has any discussion on this issue?
It appears, uh, Councilmember Delosso, that says...
I'm seeing the finger, there it is.
No, don't say that I'm seeing the finger.
Vice Mayor Delosso, please.
Fine, um, thank you. Uh, I totally agree with everything you just said, and, um, you know, there's really, we're looking at a hundred and fifty dollar fee. I mean, the city is not in financial issues where a hundred and fifty dollars is gonna make or break us, uh, and if we were, I would pay it out of pocket just to get this thing through, so I think, you know, I think for, um, the healing aspect alone is, is huge. You know, it's been only a few months, and for some of us, it's still raw, who have family members that lost their homes in the fire, and so I think this is a, a great event, I certainly plan on being there, so I would encourage us to waive that hundred and fifty dollar fee. Thank you.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yeah, the thing that, uh, that struck me, um, is the, the fact that the journal, I think, will be a healing thing, um, that, that there will be memoirs, poetry, um, artwork, um, photographs. I think that our whole area is in the process of healing, and, uh, day by day, you read different stories, and, and it's a very slow process, and it's a one foot in front of the other. So I, I really think that this is just another piece of the puzzle in moving our whole area forward in something none of us expected, um, to happen, and, and people, they say that people, even if their home wasn't affected, there's a ripple effect. Um, and so I think that the whole Sonoma County is in a healing process, so I think that something like this will help.
Would anybody on the side like to speak?
Um, actually, no. Uh, Councilmember Harvey brought up the issue that I was gonna talk about, too, just, I think it's great that it's a literary journal that the class has put together, that other people have contributed to, and, um, I just think that's a great, that you can get a collaborative effort together, and then to be able to sell that and give those profits over to the Redwood Credit Union, I think that's a great idea. So, thank you for, on behalf of your, the teacher. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Harvin. Mayor Lemon. Um, I think that, um, this is a fantastic opportunity to help with the healing. Um, obviously, it's not a, a business. Um, it would be interesting if you do develop into a nonprofit down the road. Um, and I think that the city is not in the business of being a business. The city is here to support the community and the citizens that are here, um, and I think this is appropriate, and I would highly support this.
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree. I think we've pretty much lifted our hand here. I would be very disappointed and arguably very strongly if we weren't willing to support this. I think we have something that's certainly a new idea, this is somewhat different, and it's towards an incredibly valuable purpose, that I think is clear to all of us how valuable that is right now, so with that, I, I would very much like to see, uh, a motion to adopt this resolution, as written.
Mayor Lemon, I would make a motion that we approve the two... Mayor Landman, I would make a motion that we approve the 2018 Dear Sonoma North Bay Fire Relief Fundraiser in La Plaza Park on April 28th, 2018.
Okay, and do I have a second for this anywhere?
Second.
I think Councilmember Harvey was just a second faster. So we have a second there. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And seeing none, that motion carries. Thank you for being here tonight, and best of luck with that. We look forward to seeing you now. This takes us to 11B, which is the formation of a steering committee to guide the design and development of bicycle and pedestrian wayfinding signage program. And this is John Paul Harris, our senior planner, will be presenting this, I believe, tonight. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Members of the, Councilman, my name's John Paul Harris, for the record, senior planner with the City of Cattati. So tonight, staff is recommending that the city council form a steering committee that will help guide the development and design of our bicycle and pedestrian wayfinding signage program. Excuse me. This item was last before the council in April of 2017, when we, when the council directed staff to make a request for Transportation Development Act funds, which we did do, and we received a grant. A portion of that grant, we're going to, well, we sent out an RFP once we received award, notice of the award, and we evaluated various proposals from different consultants, and one of them was on your consent calendar this morning, so we're going to be going with Merge. What we're expecting that consultant to do is to basically guide the process, and it will be a public process, working with city staff and the steering committee, and then through a series of public meetings, and probably we're expecting three to four of these steering committees, which will be Brown Act meetings because of the makeup that we're requesting. Yeah, yeah, it could bring us to the development and ultimately selection of a system and design that we'd like to go with. So essentially, the steering committee will be asked to do a couple of things. They will be asked to do what steering committees do, which is guide or steer the process. They'll be asked, you'll be asked to evaluate consultant deliverables, outline issues, if you're aware of, in the community, and that it pertain to it, and provide guidance on key project decisions. We expect that you'd be asked to attend three to four of these meetings spaced approximately four to six weeks apart, and we would see disbanding the committee probably in October or September when that effort ends. And the recommended makeup, we're looking for, our recommendation is that we select two council member members, two planning commission members, because they are also the bicycle and advisory committee, so they're familiar with our bicycle and pedestrian master plan, as well as our priorities. Two members from the design review committee, for obvious reasons, they have the design skills, they are familiar with Cattati's design priorities, and are skilled in evaluating design compatibility within Cattati. And then the other person is a member of the Chamber of Commerce Board, because we actually hope that this is going to be a future project, that will eventually include vehicular signage, business signage, things that are, well, that will promote market Cattati. And we want to have the future, well, we want it to be compatible, but whatever we do with business, with what we're approaches here.
Yeah.
So it's really what we're asking for tonight, if there's any questions on behalf of this.
All right. With that, I'm going to come back and see if there's any questions for staff, looking to this side. Any questions at this moment? Please.
And this would just be for the entire staff. Just historically, have we had steering committees in the past on other issues that have been made up of different elected boards? And I apologize if your memory doesn't go back as far as that, but I just wanted to
You know, I, nothing specific that I can recall, at least, in my time here, other than, I know there was quite an involved public process around the downtown specific plan and the charrettes, although I don't know if there was a steering committee assigned to that. Or maybe, but, no, not recently.
Okay. No, I mean, it definitely makes logical sense, for all the reasons you were saying about the bicycle committee also, as well, and so I just wanted to check and see if there was any historical basis for it. So thank you.
I'm going to look at this side. Any questions for staff? No? Oh, all right, and then before we bring this back, I'm going to open this to the public, and that was the very first hand I saw, so you get to speak first. Please approach.
It is the makeup of this steering committee that upsets me. The Chamber of Commerce has somebody, there is not a member-at-large of the public, and why is, they're not, and they're all appointees. I mean, that, yes, that'll make things go quicker, but it's not going to have any diversity, it's not going to have any, everybody's going to do what they've always done. You need to respect the public's right to be in this. I mean, I'm a pedestrian, I'm not a really bicyclist, that would be dangerous, but, you know, we, the public needs to have a right to be, especially if this is a Brown Act meeting, it's open government, you should have a way to have the public be part of it, of the steering committee. This is using old-school people, you know, and there may be new ideas with the public. Thank you.
And I'm going to look, Mr. Beric, I believe you look to be next.
I don't remember any time in the past having a steering committee here in Cattati. I'm not sure if this is an attempt to steer the public away from these meetings, but I don't know what's wrong with a good old-fashioned public workshop. It worked just fine with the Floody Disneyland project across the street, we had a nice workshop regarding that. We had workshops regarding walkable Cattati. We had a lot of public input with the workshops regarding the downtown specific charrettes and the consultants that came to town, which was about, cost the taxpayers about $1 million for that series of charrettes and the design of the downtown specific plan, which we're into, what, 10 years now? And we needed a budget of $73 million to complete it over 30 years, and here we are, with about $1 million invested in the downtown specific plan. I think we need a public workshop. I don't see any rationale, good rationale, for changing the verbiage to steering committee and keeping this out of the public light.
And thank you. And I see one more hand. Mr. Hancock, please approach.
Yes, good evening, counsel, Neil Hancock. So it's good to see that it's moving ahead with the professional services agreement. I would have a question about how many times the steering committee would be expected to meet in the public workshop format, or what would be that format that it would be used? I mean, if it's a steering committee, I would understand that it would be a public process in that. So the question I would really have is, how many times is it likely to meet, and how much advertising would there be for that? I think this is a process of making it open for the town. It's definitely an area that a lot of the rest of the towns in Sonoma have, they have some wayfinding signs around it, it's about encouraging people to get out there, and some people will come and some people won't. So certainly, I would be happy to encourage people that I know to come along to any meeting like that. Thank you.
Very good. And I can look out there in the audience one more time, and seeing none, we're going to close public comment and bring it back. I believe we're looking at about three to four meetings, is that correct, Mr. Harris?
That's correct. There'd be three to four public meetings, and they would be done in a workshop-type fashion, that's what we expect them to be.
And I imagine we're-
But we have, I mean, part of what the details on exactly what the steering committee will be doing and how it will precisely be set up, a lot of that's going to depend on our, how we work with Merge, who has quite a bit of experience in doing this. So they're going to be the, you know, in large part, driving that public workshops, steering committee process. And hopefully, you'll be, we'll be able to clarify all these questions as we move forward.
Good. Well, yeah, I could see certainly, if it follows anything to do with the history of our regular public meetings, regardless of the format, there's usually some pretty robust public back and forth, usually more than in the council meetings, I think, because there's not such a strict adherence to the typical rules of order. So I think we'll be served well there, and I certainly understand the need, you want somebody from bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee, that makes a lot of sense, design review makes a lot of sense, too, because the design of this will be crucial. It ties in, hopefully, with some uniformity and compatibility throughout the entire community, so that is somewhat crucial. Any comments, questions, discussion from the council? I'm going to start over. Anybody want to jump in, or where are we at on this, counsel?
No, I think you covered it well with the fact that there'll be open public meetings, and we'll get a lot of input to the committee, let us know what the citizen wants to do.
Right. Well-
I don't have any questions, but I do have some comments.
Please, this might be the time for that.
We have had a kind of a quasi-steering committee relationship with the Economic Development Committee when we were working with the Chamber of Commerce at one point in time. So we have had some of those collaborations previously. And I think that this is a wonderful opportunity to address what we need as a community in enlightening residents and/or visitors that might come into town in directional guidance, and also, this has been a request from the chamber for years, that we look at a appropriate signage, so that we could potentially discuss limitations and/or refinement of aid boards and signage like that. So I think this is a great opportunity to be inclusive of the Chamber of Commerce as well, and the steering committee. And, you know, a member-at-large, I don't think would be anything that would be detrimental, especially if you had eight theoretical steering committee members, and then one member-at-large would make it nine, so that would eliminate any potential.
I think we're looking at, we're looking at seven right now. We're at seven, so I think that was very carefully chosen to have that odd number for voting purposes. Any comments from this side?
Well, I think it's a great idea to kind of get all of these different groups involved, because we haven't, while we haven't had a lot of them, they bring each a different expertise, so I think that that, that's good to have that. I also don't think that it's a bad idea to have someone at-large, but I took away from this that these are public meetings, and that they expect to have three to four public meetings, which does mean that there will be input. I don't think that, as you've pointed out, the format of them has not necessarily been decided upon, and I do, you know, as I'm sure Vice Mayor will point out, we have had other steering committees that have done other things, and I agree with you that a steering committee format is a little bit less formal. It does have to be noticed properly because of the makeup of it, but I do think that they are a little less, less formal, just because of the nature of the type of committee, so I'm supportive of-
Yeah, I think it allows that flexibility, which is nice.
I think it does, too.
For something like this, it works well.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor.
Well, I love all the comments that came out, because there wasn't one council member that said they were interested, because I am deathly interested in being on this subject. So that's good, that's a good start for me. You know, and I'm not going to sit here and preach about it, I just think, you know, 30-plus years of doing signage for the public gives me just a little bit of dangerous knowledge, and I'll freely admit that, so, but I would, I think this would be, I mean, I personally would love to be one of the two council members, again, not knowing how many people are interested in that. And I think, you know, ultimately, it'd be really great that there is some kind of consistent design and style to our signs that's very appealing and pleasing to the public. And I think, you know, that's a very overarching goal, but I think that's what we would want to strive for, is something like that, because right now, you know, we've got stuff that goes back to the '70s as far as designs, and something that's far more modern in the 2000s, so, yeah, it's high time that we put some effort into this. So I would be interested, is all I'm saying at this point in time, is being one of the two council members. Thank you.
Well, with that, this is the value, I'm sorry?
Can I have one more thing? Yeah, I mean, you bring up a good point of interesting. I think one of the other things that will be ultimately important is the ability to modify. What we also don't want is something that's so strict that it, you know, takes an act of Congress to get it changed, because if we move ultimately forward with things like businesses, we know that businesses come and go, so we don't want to make it so, such a horrible process to replace that that can't be done, because then it defeats the kind of-
And that's certainly the value of having somebody from the Chamber of Commerce there, both even before we get to business involved, and just having that foot in the door to begin with.
I agree with that.
And I'll follow my colleagues' lead here and put my two cents in, because I would very much like to be on this committee, well, with council support, of course, if you're willing. I've been pushing this one probably not as long as the chamber, I don't think, but for a couple of years, because I saw how this worked out down in Nevada, and I don't know if anybody's had a chance to look at their old town, but they've done a really nice job of doing something like this. They have informational kiosks, they have small signs in the businesses, they have larger signs now that will welcome you to the community, they have a graph, a professional graphic design ID that is uniform and unanimous, and it hearts the design of it, hearts to something important in the city. And it does something that I think that we could very easily accomplish in this city, too, as I noticed in the old-town part of Nevada, there are small placards, again, with specific colors and shapes on them, that show pictures of the building in its beginning, 100 years ago, this is what it was used for, and it occurs to me, we have wonderful resources for that in this town, to do that with a lot of our buildings, with the Cattati Historical Society's resources. That may not be, something comes out of the first step, I don't know, but when we get around to that, that fits so well in this community. So I pushed for that. I do have some background in graphics, I did some professional-level work, that was back in the '90s and early 2000s, but it still works. And mostly, it occurs to me, too, we're going to have a Brown Act thing, that's going to have numerous people, you'll need somebody to chair it, there's some logic to have the mayor chair it, because that way you can make sure the meetings run well, and make sure everybody has their input, but at the same time, we're able to get through and do the things we need to do. So that's my two cents. So with that, we have to, one, form a steering committee, select two people, appoint two council members, and authorize design review, planning, and the Chamber of Commerce to appoint members.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I just had a couple of quick questions. I would be in support of both yourself and Vice Mayor Delosso on that. I do have a concern with the choice of words from Vice Mayor Delosso on dangerous knowledge, deathly interested, and need to make sure we don't need to look into that further?
Well, that's up to the chief.
I will say I'm feeling much more comfortable with that, because I pushed for years in the poor city manager, look at what Nevada did, and look at Nevada did, and they went out and looked at all the professional design people, and Merge is the company that actually did Nevada's. So I'm not worried, I don't think even two amateurs like us can hurt this, I think, I know that part of it will be well done, so I think we're safe.
And I just had a quick procedural question. Did you, could we do this as one motion, or should we separate them into three separate motions, since there's going to be a little bit more involvement in the second part of
Would we need a nomination format?
If we could do it as one, you could do the nominations.
You know, I think it can be one motion, but I would, I would ask that you maybe take up the three, at least get a sense of where everybody is, and then fold it all into one motion would be fine.
All right, so are we in agreement, then? I'm just going to look for a thumbs up in forming a steering committee. Are we comfortable with that process to guide the design and development? Listening around, we're good there. Are we comfortable with the Vice Mayor and myself being the two appointed members?
Yep.
I am okay with that.
Okay, thank you, very appreciate that, by the way, thank you. Thank you for your support. And are we comfortable authorizing design review committee and planning commission in the chamber to appoint members?
Yes.
Okay, so we have some consensus on that, so we can take this as one motion and just add the Vice Mayor's and my names in that motion?
Okay.
Whoever's willing to take that on.
Want me to take a stab at that?
Please do.
I'd like to make a motion to form a steering committee to help guide the design and development of a bicycle and pedestrian wayfinding signage program, and appoint two city council members, Mayor Landman and Vice Mayor Delosso, to the committee, and authorize design review committee, planning commission, and Chamber of Commerce to appoint members to this city committee.
Very good. Do I have a second for this?
A second?
We have a second. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? And thank you, that motion carries unanimously. So that is 11B. We are on now to item 12, which is the city manager's report. Mr. O'Geady.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So on Sunday, our police chief traveled to Vallejo and accepted Congressman Mike Thompson's Public Safety Hero Award, which he gave- Public Safety Hero Award, which he gave to our Catati Police Department, which is good news. And the chief had nominated a dispatcher and an officer for the award, but Congressman Mike Thompson instead awarded it to our entire department for mutual aid during the fires, citing our efforts with evacuations and also helping the sheriff's office with dispatching to, you know, relieve the dispatchers as they were getting overstretched. And Catati was one of three law enforcement agencies to receive his award this year. Also, just on some recreation news, on February 6th, we had Star Kids, I mentioned this before in the last meeting, but we had a Star Kids production free workshop for children's, children ages five to seven. We had thirteen children participate in that free workshop, and I saw some good videos on Facebook from that. And we also have, currently have forty-one students enrolled in the program for eight and up, the eight and up age group, producing Little Mermaid Jr., which is the largest group in Star Kids Productions' history. So, I don't know, I guess it must be working in the Catati room, because that's a large group. And then, this past Saturday, we hosted our first-ever Sweethearts Fairy Tale Dance, that's kind of like a father-daughter type dance. And we had thirty-five guests who got to enjoy the night, being dressed up, making crafts, and dancing the night away. So we're looking to repeat that in the future. It was well received. And then tomorrow, night for Valentine's Day, and this coming Saturday on February 17th, we're hosting two Parents Night Out events, where parents can leave their children in our care anytime between 5:00 and 10:00 p.m. and enjoy a night out together. And we're providing the kids with pizza, games, crafts, and fun while their parents are out. And then finally, this was mentioned earlier in announcements, but we have a new comic drawing class starting on February 15th, the Community Center for Children Ages Seven and Up. And this is where children learn how to create their own character and bring them to life in a comic format. And if you have any questions or need more information, you can always visit the city website at catatacyt.org, or contact Ashley Wilson at (665) 4222, or awilson@cataticyt.org. That's it for tonight, thanks.
Very good. Any questions for the city manager from council? No questions? I'm going to congratulate Chief and all the staff over there in receiving that award, and as well everybody else in law enforcement that stepped in. And we'll point out, as we discussed many years ago, we sat in this room trying to determine the value during difficult financial times of keeping our own dedicated dispatching crew. And here's another clear example of why that turned out to be a good decision, beyond being able to bring good services here, do other work for us, as well as now take care of the college, we're also able to help in an emergency like that, and that's a pretty important thing. So congratulations to y'all. All right, let's see, we are now to city council members' reports, and I'm going to start over to my right tonight?
Well, since I get to be first out of the gate, I get to talk about going to the mayors and council members' dinner in Sebastian Hall on the eights. That was a lot of fun, and I really enjoyed the idea of having different nonprofits come that were involved in the fire efforts, and then presenting, we had Paws as loving, what was it?
Pals.
Pals, but it's, I was trying to remember what the letters stood for. But anyway, it was great fun having several dogs there and having them talk about their program and the different organizations that they work with in the community. So I really liked that idea of just finding out more about the nonprofits that really stepped up and helped contribute to whatever they could do to help with the stress of that event. And it was only just four months ago, that just blows my mind. And then also, this coming Friday, we'll be having an ad hoc committee meeting regarding the new website design.
Excellent. Councilmember Moore.
Well, the city manager and myself went to our annual REMF conference in beautiful downtown Willets, lovely place. It was an interesting meeting, we, there's been some significant changes under the direction of our new general manager for MEA. And Mr. Obid and I will be presenting a streamlined version of that to the council at a future Many times I am used to being a lone vote on a four-on or something like that, but on this particular day with the board members numbering fifteen, it happened to be a fourteen-to-one vote on a crucial issue. And so that was a little difficult to swallow, but we got through it, and the organization will be moving on. So we'll give you a streamlined version of what's going on in that at the next meeting.
Excellent, we'll look forward to that update. Yeah, fourteen-one, that sounds tough. I'm going to look to this side. Would you like to start, Councilmember Harvey?
I attended what is likely to be our last Catati Oversight Board meeting, because the county looks like it's taking that over, so kind of thanked everyone for their support on that, so we will move forward with that. I also attended the Water Advisory Committee meeting, and a couple of things out of that. One is the Sonoma and Water Saving Partnership will expire in June, and so we, they're likely working on, they are working on a new MOU, so that is likely to come back to us sometime before then for us to be part of. And then, just to kind of give people a little heads up on water, Lake Mendocino's at ninety-four percent, it's kind of at a normal condition right now. Lake Sonoma's at eighty-four percent. They're doing the best they can with water releases, and they are likely to have to file an urgency filing in the April-May time period because we need rain. So that is a problem. And last but not least on that, Mark Malon of Windsor was named the Chair of the WAC, and I was named the Vice Chair, so I'm now the Vice Chair of the WAC. So that's all I have on that one. And then we had our Sigma meeting, and that got a little bit interesting with the boundaries. The boundaries, while the state draws a nice little line around, the properties kind of go in and out of the lines, so they don't really match up, because one is done by geologists and one is done by parcels, and so there's a little bit of possible boundary modification that may happen. And some, there's some number of properties that had the joy of being in two basins, and obviously, that's a little bit of a problem, so those are going to have to be figured out. So that was an interesting presentation. And then they will start working on the fee rate study pretty quickly, so we'll get more information on that. But that group is starting to go, the Advisory Committee had their first couple of meetings, and there's eighteen people on it, and they're doing really well. So more on that. And I also attended mayor and council members', and it was, it was good, it was a great meeting. And I felt sort of bad for the poor gentleman from the EOC, but he, I thought he did a pretty good job considering, you know, what was being, you know, thrown at him by people.
If you're going to come from the Emergency Operating Center, you've got to be up to that, I guess.
Yeah, so he actually handled it pretty well, I thought, yeah.
So let me take a moment to congratulate you as Vice Chair of the WAC. So two-year rotation, right?
Yeah.
So in two years, you are quite likely to be the Chair of the WAC.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's quite, that's a good thing, good thing for Catati.
I think so.
Very good. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I'll never be able to say that I was a wacky Chair, so that's really good.
You're so kind.
I just wanted to throw that out there.
I'm not going to take that.
Honestly, outside of mayors and council, and then the ad hoc committee this coming Friday, there was an Ag and Open Space District meeting, there was no new and relevant information to report out, we just kind of went over the usual business, and that's all that I have.
Very good. All right, let's see, I have three items to go over. First of all, a quick report out from the mayors and council members' mayor's meeting. We were requested to come back to all our councils and to our staff, and they asked us to come up with two to three items, roughly, two, we could stretch it to three if we get creative, for mayors and council meeting topics for this year. And I think there's a lot of interest, understandably, for these probably to be fire-related, safety, those sorts of issues. We kicked around the idea of having perhaps some sort of emergency training overview, trying to see if we could do some first responder or certain type thing through that process to update everybody's emergency plans at the same time, since you have everybody in the same room. But general suggestions like that, so I just wanted to report that to you and staff, and we'll see if we can bring that back as an agenda item perhaps soon, before the next mayors and council members' meeting, so we can come up with some ideas for them. Did get to attend the 2017 Sonoma County State of the County event, representing Catati. Interesting event, the new Chair of the Board of Supervisors, Supervisor Gore, kind of really remade it, made it a lot more interesting, and it was a good presentation, a couple of takeaways from that. One thing, I love there was an analogy of what just happened with the economy in terms of the stimulus of the new tax cuts, they likened it to a heavy-sugar dessert after a big meal. So there was some concern that basically, we're in a very secure economy right now, but there is a concern this might have some inflationary aspects to it because of this stimulus at a time when typically, you don't see stimulus in those areas when they're doing well. So we'll see what happens with that. And lastly, just a quick report out from Sonoma Clean Power, we too had our elections. Our new Chair is Dan Hamburg in Mendocino County, and I am your new Vice Chair, so I will be the first returning Vice Chair for Sonoma Clean Power, and with a little luck, maybe in a year, might be Chair again. So that's all I have for tonight. So let's see, that brings us to public comment on non-action agenda items. I have no cards, so I can see who'd like to speak. You did it again, you had your hand first. Ms. Alderman, please.
Up with my hand. This is sort of related to the city council, I mean, city manager's report. The photo contest, we still have nothing when it is, and I personally like to put in a plug of my photo I submitted with twelve peacocks on my porch in Life on the West Side, so we need to have, I'd like to see that go forward. The others are future agenda items, we still have done nothing for the homeless, and it's just getting worse, it seems. We're having a lot, a little bit of people coming over from Rona Park, and Rona Park's going downhill real quick. But anyways, and the other thing is, we're still coming up on, if we continue with the drought, weed abatement, and also tree management. There's a lot of trees into phone line, I mean, electrical lines and stuff like that, and it'd be nice for, and trees that are on private property that are out of control, that are fifty feet high. And that's a danger to the public and the people in the neighborhood, and it seems like it should be addressed at some point. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Berisch, please approach.
Regarding future agendized items, I'd like to suggest that if the city manager is posting any videos of some of the activities here at City Hall or the Recreation Department, if he can just let us know where they are being posted so that the public can also view them and enjoy them as well. I'm not familiar where these Facebook photos are being hosted at. I'd also like to explain to you that the city manager promised that the city webcasts would be shown on Comcast Channel 26. To this date, Channel 26 does not broadcast or cablecast anything from Catati, not a bulletin board, not an advertisement, not a list of future events, and surely not our city council meetings. So I'm getting a little tired of the runaround that we're getting on this issue, it's not going to go away. We pay extensive cable fees, and we feel that Catati should enjoy the same benefits that Rona Park does in having our own cable channel dedicated to Catati to promote what is happening in Catati, and so forth. Last but not least, I would really like to see on the future agenda, the council suggesting a public workshop on the homeless. I think it's high time, through all the, all the discussions about the homeless, that we sit down as adults in a workshop and put our heads together and figure out what Catati is going to do in a very miniscule way, as Mr. Deloso pointed out, there's got to be some miniscule things that we can do to rise to the occasion regarding the homeless problem in Catati. We have to do more than giving them a free car ride, or police car ride, to an adjoining city that actually does offer some services. I think we can do more, we've got to start someplace, and I think that we can all sit together and figure out where to start. I want to tell you another quick story that might ring home to you. I was out in the downtown area of a neighboring town one night, and a homeless person came in off the street and asked to use the telephone. And it was getting late, and they allowed him to use the telephone, and he called 911. It was raining out, it was very cold, it was a real nasty night. And he called 911 and claimed that he was having heart palpitations or something, and the EMTs came and picked him up, sirens roaring, and picked him up and took him to the ER room. And the representative at the restaurant told me that this person does this often when it gets like this, for a free meal and to get out of the cold. We can only, we can only estimate what that costs our fire departments and our EMTs and police departments. And I'd like to see what we can do to try to curb that problem that's happening more and more, and I think it would be a good light on Catati. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berisch. Mr. Hancock, please.
Yes, good evening, council. Neil Hancock. First of all, I'd like to really say thank you for the webcast. It's brilliant to be able to step into the webcast afterwards and go to the item that's being talked about and really focus on that and get educated about some of the things that are going on. The second item I'd like to bring up is that the bicycle route with the road outside Sunflower Park that has the roots coming up in the road, I mean, it was cut back a couple of years ago, or the roots were dug out, but it is a, this is going west on East Catati Avenue outside the courts, and it is a real hazard to go over that, particularly in the dark. So I'd really bring that up as an item that, it's a safety hazard for anybody out there on two wheels going in that direction, and just like to highlight it again. Thank you very much.
Very good, thank you. Can you look around one more time and see if anybody else would like, there we go. Please approach.
My name is Christine Irvin, and I live at Marsh Way in an apartment complex. I want to thank Mr. Obid for finally getting the signage put up about the non-smoking in the area. She finally did it. The problem we're having is there are tenants that are still smoking, and it affects us. They also use enormous amounts of, you know, air freshener uncomfortable that seep, just like the smoke. And I'm exploring ways in which, because we do have a lawyer, but it's expensive, and I'm exploring ways in which the city can be, like in the form of an inspector or somebody that can come down and have the town be more involved in getting this it stopped. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have anybody else who wants to speak? Let's see, let's bring this back, we have a couple of questions here. One, what is the timeline? If you could remind me the timeline for the photo contest, where are we at in that?
So to date, we've, we do have a, we have a group of photos that were submitted, and we're looking through them now. We didn't put a hard deadline on the webpage, if that was your actual question, but we didn't put a hard deadline. The general thought was we'd see how they, how it went, and right now, I think the next, the intended next step was to, was to take those photos and, and just basically look at them and see which ones, you know, would be usable. There's various ways we could do that. One of the ways that we've been talking about internally is using like a Facebook poll, we have a whole group of photos, and just see which ones resonate with people, and maybe, you know, move forward with those in a more public way, but, you know, that's, so anyway, that's where we are with it.
And basically, any city photos that are posted on our Facebook page, or any city videos are going to be on the city's Facebook page, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, I would imagine that, but just to answer that question. All right, very good. Let's see. Let's see. And we had a question about routes west on East Catati, perhaps being a hazard. Is this something that might be picked up in any of the work that's supposed to be happening out there, or is that more median?
It would be. So the pavement work that the council authorized the contract, design contract for our last meeting, it would take care of all that.
Eighteen.
Hmm?
Eighteen, cover that.
Yeah.
So your timing's perfect. It's going to get taken care of. What's our timeline roughly in that, this summer, are we thinking?
It's actually today, yeah. No, so the design would be this year, and construction would be next year. So we'll take a look at it and see if we can do some interim fixes.
Great, that would be good. Thank you for that. And I believe you're working, and I'm sorry, I didn't get your, Christine, I didn't get your last name clearly.
Irvin, I R V I.
Irvin, but you're working with the City Manager in regards to these issues? You are in contact?
He did write a letter to the landlord, to ask for the signage that she never put up about non-smoking, you know, in the complex.
Very good.
And then she finally did it a year and a month later. It's a very, very difficult situation.
I understand. All right, very good. So we'll bring that back then. So let's see, do we have any information received after the agenda was posted? Nope, seeing none. We have some closed-session topics for tonight. A, Public Employee Performance Evaluation, California Government Code Section 54957B, Title, City Manager. And we also have B, Public Employee Compensation, Government Code Section 54957.6, and this is the unrepresented employee, which is the City Manager, and the city-designated representatives are Vice Mayor John DeLuso and Councilmember John Moore. So we're going to be adjourning to closed session, and we'll report out afterwards. Thank you, everybody.
Pardon me, yeah? Here.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. If you would just call for public comment before you adjourn into a session.
Oh, certainly. I'm having a bad night. Do we have any public comment, anything to do with closed session? No? Thank you very much. Oh, certainly, I'll take a couple of minutes.
Sorry.
Lauren, did you plan for us to meet in the City Manager's office or over in this meeting?
Yes.
City Manager's office, very good.
Lauren, did you plan for us to meet in the City Manager's office or over in this meeting?
Yes.
City Manager's office, very good.
Oh, yeah, I mean, yeah, right, so, yeah, so if you have any locally installed programs.
Hopefully, it's in the past.
All those city-approved programs over there, it's mostly the trial.
I'm going to go pirate, you look like a pirate.
Yeah, it's kind of like, you didn't have to move it by.
See if they can find it back.
Well, it's probably, is that what it said?
You said, or no, you said everybody.
Well, it's probably, is that what it said?
Well, it's probably, is that what it said?
I know you locked up out there.
Okay, the girls are coming in with my key.
Is the front door open? Okay, yeah, I'll text them to come in the front door.
I guess we're done? Have you already recorded out?
It's on video, so do you want to have?